You are watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM daily. Visit us often on the web at www allaboutalpena.com. Once there, you can email us with your thoughts, concerns, questions, and of course, we have our updated schedule there, or feel free to call us at (354) 2295.
These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting, and good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer, unplug just a little bit, and head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena, located on the Sunrise Shore of Michigan, only a few hours' drive, but miles away from the weight of the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay, where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse, or the masts that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena, a haven from the world that's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Is that good? There we go. Good evening and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, September 3rd, 2013. Call the roll, please.
Tyler?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Waldorah?
Here.
The rest of the place?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last meeting. Any modifications or problems? Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening?
Yeah, it's like, uh, had a discussion of the city app, I guess, maybe 11A or 12A, whatever works for.
Karen, do you have any preferences?
No.
12A is fine, just nothing else there. And someone could possibly...
Oh, wait, wait a second on that one, I'm sorry.
Oh, we gotta...
Oh, yeah, okay, gotcha, okay.
Go ahead.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldorah?
Aye.
Tyler?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion, or if Karen requests that they have the winery. Yeah, if I had it on the...
Yes, please.
Second?
Oh, well, we should say where that's gonna be. New business?
Yeah.
B, 13B? Thank you. When you're ready.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldorah?
Aye.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a city council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Todd Butterworth, 408 Taylor. And I'm here on behalf of the tenants and landlords of the City of Alpena, and that was great, and justice for all. Mandatory rental inspections are unconstitutional. Does the Constitution apply to the renters? If you own your home, you have the right to choose who comes in, but if you rent, you do not. This is unconstitutional. We should all have the same right. Rental inspections are intrusive to all tenants, and it's an invasion of privacy. If a tenant does not want you in their home, you just go get a search warrant, and that violates his or her civil rights. Remember, your home is your castle, no matter if you rent or if you own. The Fourth Amendment says, "It prohibits unreasonable search and seizures and supported by probable cause." That was put in the Constitution by James Madison in 1789. And here we are just repeating ourselves, okay, because that was put in there because of the British coming in our homes. If safety is the reason for the mandatory rental inspections, then why would you let a non-licensed inspector inspect the electrical, the mechanical, or the plumbing in the unit when state law requires inspectors to have a license? This ordinance takes money out of the pocket of the landlord, but even worse, it takes the civil liberties away from the tenants. I, this is the first one. I have invested for $225,000 into the City of Alpena, and, um, with no help from the city. I better not say the rest. But, um, and then right now, I have received three citations from the city, because I just feel it is, well, you just read what I... And then I'd like to read this. This is state law. Electrical inspectors employed by a county, city, or other units of government for the express purpose of enforcing the State Electrical Code shall be registered with the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, Bureau of Construction Code, Building Division. Further information, registered electrical inspectors are required to have experience, two years of experience as a licensed journeyman worker, or shall be licensed as a master electrician under the provisions of 1956 Part 217, and maintain their registration through continuous educational requirements that are mandated by state law. I guess that's really all I have to say. And of course, you know, the rental inspections are just not... I could go on and go on and go on, but I only have five minutes. But I also have some material that I would like to give to you guys. I'll make copies of it. I have pictures, and I just feel that Mike Kalaszewski is just doing a lot of the job. But like I said, I'm not here to offend anybody, I'm just here to say my piece. So I believe my five minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. No announcements this evening, there are no more. The consent agenda, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $375,872.43. B is approval of a budget amendment for the July 4th and July 27th fireworks in the amount of $10,223. C is approval of a budget amendment for public works radio replacement in the amount of $12,820. D is a Michigan Municipal League designation of voting delegate for the annual MML business meeting. It's Karen, or I'm sorry, it's Susan Nielsen. I wanna go. E is set public hearing date of October 7th, 2013, to hear the request of Mr. and Mrs. Eugene Majeski to have the city vacate an undeveloped portion of Monroe Street.
With approval of the consent agenda?
One second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldorah?
Aye.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
I have a proclamation this evening. Whereas, the first annual 30 Days of Peace began on September 11th, 2007, the 101st anniversary of Mahatma Gandhi's creation of the modern nonviolence movement, and concluded on October 10th, the birthday of the late international journalist and musician Daniel Pearl. And whereas, the central focus of 30 Days is the Internal Day of Peace, or Peace Day, held annually on September 21st, and whereas, we in Alpena are celebrating our seventh annual 30 Days of Peace presented by the Alpena Coalition for Peace and supported by LARCC. We have collaborated with our local community to lend our unique expression of this event, and whereas, for us, it means to increase awareness, educate, and inspire persons in our community to embrace peace as a choice, and we do this through providing dynamic speakers who challenge us to think beyond our own experience, films which educate and inform, open panel discussions which help us to see both sides of issues, the arts and music, whose universal language helps us to experience a spirit of unity, and religious experiences which open our souls to deeper prayer and a more peaceful way of living. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Waldorah, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim September 11th to October 11th, 2013, as 30 Days of Peace in Alpena, and encourage the participation of all public, private, and homeschool students to participate in the peace contest and peace concert, and all citizens to be involved in the scheduled activities during this occasion found at the Alpena County Library and advertised in the Alpena News, signed today. Karen, would you let me come on?
Can I just notice that?
I don't like the loss of the view.
This is very, very...
Steve, if you'd like, you got a quick snap of that?
I got it.
Just your phone, too?
Help!
Report of officers, we have bids for the police vehicles. Chief Jet?
Good evening. From the packet you received on July 17th, 2013, the City of Alpena announced to receive sealed bids for a 2014 large four-door sedan, all-wheel-drive Ford police cruiser sub. Notice that the project was posted on the city's website, published in the local newspaper, and several vendors throughout the state were also notified. The city received an open one bid for the project on August 13th, 2013, from Gorno Ford of Woodhaven, Michigan. Gorno Ford participates in my deal, which is an extended purchasing program which allows Michigan cities to do state contracts to buy goods and services. Some enclosed documentation initially indicated the bid amount was for $26,720.25 for each vehicle, but further clarification revealed the purchase price was $24,209 with the requested specifications. Pardon me. It is further estimated that each patrol car will require approximately $6,500 to $8,500 in aftermarket equipment, quotes from several vendors who were previously received, but we've asked for updated quotes because the timeframe has gone by. Presently, the department has been allocated $77,000, or $77,000 for the purchase and equipping of patrolled vehicles in the 1314 fiscal year budget. Additionally, as council is aware, the city was recently awarded $13,000 in grants from USDA Road Development Program toward the purchase of a patrol vehicle. A second grant application is still in process, and it is possible additional funds, federal funds, may become available. In the event additional funds are awarded, they would be applied towards the purchase of a second vehicle. If not, the city would bear the cost for the additional patrol vehicle. With that, I'm asking council to award the bid to Gorno Ford, and will be permission to go ahead and move forward on the purchase of the two patrol vehicles. If you have any questions. We also did submit the bid sheet with the original number and a attachment to, I guess it would be, was a list of the bid list we've made out to several vendors, including some local ones. Any questions?
I've got one, just kinda curious, because I'm not used to seeing just one bidder on there. Is it, is it because these others may have not been hooked up with the my deal? Do you have any insight to that?
Well, I can only speculate on it, Mike. My deal is a, from what I understand, a competitive bid process, Rich, or I'm wrong, but it's where dealerships will agree to meet certain specifications with the state, and they get the state bid. If we were to buy from a dealership that is a my deal awarded vendor, we're not actually required to go and get additional bids. We did this trying to give other people an opportunity to kinda jump on the wagon. Whether they couldn't compete, I can only, it's hard to say, but they were given the opportunity.
Counsel is aware of the need, but since the public's not really part of the CIP process, could you maybe just real briefly state why there's a need for new vehicle?
Well, we have not purchased new patrol cars, and I wanna say three, three possibly four. And a lot of our fleet, most of it is aging. We have a couple of cars that are over 100,000 miles right now. When the rigors are put on police vehicles, they can be very demanding, as you can imagine. We're starting to see that the cost now associated with an older fleet, we haven't had for quite some time, but greater concern of a cost is more of a safety issue. We have a failure, and you know, if we're cornering and we have something go wrong, it could be catastrophic. So maintaining our equipment and providing our officers with the best equipment that we can is paramount for safety and for the public's safety also.
How long does a typical vehicle like this last? I mean, I know we've stretched it a little bit, I guess we have, several years, but...
Um, I think the oldest car in our fleet is a 2006, maybe a '05. And then also, what we try to do when we rotate the older patrol cars out, if they still have some surface of life in them, they'll typically go to like, do be an admin car. Sometimes they'll come to City Hall for a travel car, or something that's less demanding on the vehicle. So we try to get every mile on, if we can, and if not, we go to auction. Any other questions?
How much do you recover after, when you get rid of the older ones? About?
It depends. Another example is, we had a couple of Tafoes that subsequently went into service with the fire department, and they were reconditioned, and they're used for some services that I think they call their echo. They're currently using more of them than our Tafoes. But, you know, price management, it varies at auction, as an auction, it's hard to say. But again, we recycle as much equipment out of them as we can also. Now, we are going to a newer model, we're going to afford, and we're getting going to Palace, and so with that, you also have the expense, initial expense of that new equipment that is specific toward that bid. So, but we try to recycle everything we can, and get most use out of everything.
I hope we award the bid to Gorno Ford and move forward with the process of purchasing two patrol vehicles.
Waldorah?
Aye.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Are you all set?
Excited, I believe?
I'm excited, William. I feel like Bill Corbush tonight.
Yeah, we added...
I'd get a heart.
We added a 12A, but I'll tell you what...
Quite good. I wanna stand here quietly.
If you wanna relinquish the podium to... Let's take, just for the flow, I guess we did add a 12A before we get to new business. So unfinished business is the Alpena app, the municipality municipal app. Just basically, some questions arose since our last meeting. Council asks for some clarification, so open for discussion.
Yeah, I think in our last meeting, we were, I speak for everybody, we all seemed excited about that opportunity. And to give credit where credit's due, a citizen kinda brought this up, I think, he made a couple legitimate points. One, and council can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that we should bid that out, as opposed to just having a company come to us and decide to sign off on it, that, you know, if we're interested in a bid as a city, I guess I would staff look into it, that's something that we should be bidding. And secondly, you know, we are gonna bid it out, maybe have staff look at what we want out of it, as opposed to the prepackaged, you know, deal. You know, some of those, some of the, call them the elements of that app maybe didn't apply to us, maybe there's others that we would like. And lastly, kinda look at what the chamber does, or theirs, before we really make a decision on it, so we don't have that repetition. Like, I guess it may be mostly interested in, this is something that needs to be bid out, as any other services, and then maybe have staff look at, you know, some specific areas that they want to focus on. There are some repeats from what was proposed on the app to our website, for example, whether we want to have that repetitive element, if that's, you know, positive or negative. So, but just wanna make sure a couple of those things are straightened out, we saw what the chamber was doing before we signed off on any specific contract. I thought it was gonna throw out there to have staff look at, or anything else people are interested.
Yeah, and I guess to address some of the, some of the questions that came up, I'll start with, I'll start with just the fact that it was, this was kinda done on committee level, even though the committee was very small, moving forward committee, but when it, you know, with the questions that came, and if I apologize if I didn't explain that well enough during the presentation at the last meeting, but when it comes to the chamber, we had discussions with the chambers. As a matter of fact, the first meeting was with the chamber representatives were attended as well, just to get the whole, so all of us got the same presentation from the vendor. And their, basically, their customer base for the app, for lack of better terms, is vastly different than ours. We're a municipality, we wanted to have municipal issues on our app and not be convoluted with, pardon that term as well, I guess, I wanna say that theirs is convoluted, but their whole thought track and process for what they wanted an app for was significantly different than what a municipality would want an app for, in my opinion, and I was presenting that to you all as well, which is kinda why I asked that everybody download the app, so you can take a look at it and see what it would do. It's really not so much for private enterprise, what, you know, what stores do we have and things like that. The municipality, in our opinion, didn't wanna get too caught up in that, because then we would have issues with, why are they listed before us? Why aren't we on there? Things of that nature. So we wanted to keep our app very municipal oriented, user-friendly for residents for that process. Not to say that we might wanna add something later, but as a ground, from the ground, we wanted to use it as a tool. The repetitiveness with the, with the website, absolutely. It is basically, half of it is basically what's on our website. That's because people don't carry laptops and packs and Macs around anymore, and people carry their phones around. So to be able to open up the app and have immediate email and phone access to all of us, and a brief history about us and Alpena, it's, all of that is definitely repetitive. And that's part of what, that is part of what was intriguing from the staff standpoint of not having to have too much time in what our staff would have to do. That was a big issue, even when we discussed it at the last meeting, was that, how much staff time are we gonna have to put into this? Because a lot of it gets drawn right off of our website, that was part of the draw for that. So that part, to, I guess to address the issue with, with us, either myself or staff, I guess, making a presentation for a vendor, he gave that presentation to us on more like a committee level, and he wasn't available to give that presentation, so basically, Steve just gave what he gave, for informational purposes, not so much to promote that business by any means, but just, that was informational. And maybe, maybe if either Steve or Rich would like to go into a little bit of how the bid process works, from my, from my standpoint, I can't even imagine how we would bid that out, because the apps that are out there are so incredibly different, I'm not sure how we would even, how we would even do that. I know that they have a bid list, so to speak, when we order a pump for the water plant or something like that, but for something like this, I'm not even really sure how that process would work, but maybe, I don't know, if you'd like to address that somehow?
I'm kinda on the same page right now. I would definitely have to do some investigation into it and just see what, you know, how much we get into the process. It would definitely have to be, not necessarily a bid process, but more like a request for proposals, because you're looking at, what can you offer us, and what types of things would be in the app? And I guess we would just, I'm sure there's avenues to find that stuff, I don't know if MML would have something like that, where we could get some sort of list to look at, but kinda look at putting some specs together and deciding what we want, you know, holding staff to find out what would be a good thing to have in this thing, and then move from there, and do a request for proposal.
Yeah, and I kinda let some of the references do that legwork for us, so to speak, when I, when I called, you know, several of them, and one of the questions that I had was, was, you know, is this, is it worth what, do you feel that it's worth what you paid? Was kinda how I, kinda how I presented my question, and especially the last IT guy that I talked to, wherever he was, Ohio, I think, couldn't believe that we were getting it for $99 a month, because there is, they have a larger, they have a larger resident base, so their price was higher, so they were paying like $500 a month, and he's like, if you get what we got for $99 a month, it's, it's basically a steal. So, yeah.
I know that you, Noah, I'll be going to an MML conference, and there will be vendors there, and I have a suspicion that that'll be one of the newer ones. I would be happy to see what's available there and bring it all back to you, if that would be helpful.
I think sometimes, too, when you have something like this, and you get started, and that's what kind of intrigued me, it was a pretty minimal investment on our part, but it was only for a year, it wasn't a long-term contract, and normally, if you have something like that, that intrigues other vendors to start, you know, approaching you and, you know, seeing what they have, representing what they have. I had absolutely no idea how many different of these companies supplied these different apps and so on, I'm not real familiar with them at all, but I would be open to the idea of looking to see what else is out there, but at the same time, I think you can gather more companies to come show you what they have, once they see that you're using it, you know, and I'm interested to see how many of the citizens would be using it.
I guess Bill could probably clarify, don't we have to either bid or have a request for proposal? Because I don't, I guess I don't remember a time where we ever just said, we really wanna do this, and we're gonna hire techs. But, I mean, is that, you clarify that, is that something we have to do?
I believe the policy requires sealed bids on 10,000 or more. I mean, the better policy may be always to bid everything, but, you know, the thought in the past of council was that, when you have some of these smaller things, the bid process itself kind of takes up a lot of time and energy, and it may not be worth it when you're talking about that small of a month. So here, we're talking $99 a month, so $1,200 for the year. Could you bid it? Yes, but it'd be difficult to bid with bid specifications. It'd be more along the request for proposal, saying, what can you give us, and what can you give it to us for? So I don't think council policy required us to solicit bids, and, you know, if you wanted that to happen, you'd have to change the policy.
Well, yeah, sealed bids are 10,000. However, we go out for bids for...
So I don't think council policy required us to solicit bids, and, you know, if you wanted that to happen, you'd have to change the policy.
Well, yeah, sealed bids are 10,000, however, we go out for bids for lesser amounts. We still go out just for quotes and for the bids, so...
I think, too, the grant that they talked about, we received a grant that...
They did? The vendor did?
They, okay.
Just for clarification.
But that, this grant allowed them to offer it to us for only 99 a month, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Do they all, do they all do that? Is that something that most companies would have access to? It's a definite. And Citizen who asked, do they make money? Are they making money off our, off the information they gather? Why would they not? It's information. So I don't know, it seems to me that it wouldn't hurt to ask questions anyway.
Yeah, and it, well, and some of the questions are like, can we make our own app? We, I talked to Steve about that, there's just, so some of that, and actually having someone, having someone pay us to promote, so that, with that said, here, I guess here's my question, and this is how it developed. The vendor approached us. It was a fantastic deal. We did, it had what we felt is, is a good, definitely a good starting point for an app for the municipality. It's very similar to our website, it's very user friendly, they can pull all the stuff off. It was a good, it was a good presentation, it's very basic, you can get a lot of flashy apps out there. Does this one take care of what we need? Is it inexpensive? $1,200 is will be our overall expense for it for the year, so if, if what you're suggesting is that we put it out for a request for proposals, I just want to know who's going to do it? Who's going to have time to even put a proposal together? Who's going to go through them all and decipher which ones are even comparable? And who is going to sit down and determine where we go from there? You can come back with some information from MML, but even if you do, and we have some brochures, and then we got legwork to call down, I'm just saying, if you...
What's the return of that investment?
What's the return of all of that, when, and then we do, and then we do have to go back to a point that, two weeks ago, at a meeting, we passed a unanimous vote to sign that contract. So, so what would be the vote to retract a vote to sign a contract? So I just want to put all that together before we make any other, any new decisions to go in a different direction. I would just want to clarify exactly who's going to, who's going to do it. I don't want to put that on Steve himself, and when you say staff, who in staff is going to look at the different, all these different apps, and so, just food for thought.
And that's kind of what I'm struggling with that, too. I like the low investment, I like the idea of the app, and it's a very minimal investment, but we don't even know what we don't know on this so far. We haven't had anybody show us what an app is even possible of. So for the minimal investment, you know, I'm kind of leaning where we're at, just for that, just to know, and then within a year, if we know, hey, there's other things that we can do, and we, you know, are educated a little bit more, we can make a better informed decision on, you know, if these different apps are better, and we can change it.
And that's, that was kind of my thought track as well, and I, and I will add that, that if I didn't mention already, that there'll be a presentation on Thursday evening at the IG meeting for the app that the, so you'll get a little bit more information on what the chamber's doing. But I kind of keep going back to the fact that if you take 12 months minus 60 days, on that day, we can say, you know what, the $99 we spent was, this is horrendous, this is terrible. So we, you know, at that point, we would have, you know, we'll be out $1,200, we'll have learned a lesson, that wasn't what we want, we have the company shut it off, and then we, then we've educated ourselves more on what it can and can't do. So that, that's where I stand again, is to just say, you know what, it's a minimal investment, it'd be a good learning curve, and, but at the same time, throughout the next 11 months, in the event that we keep this one throughout the next 11 months, that's a better timeframe for anybody that wants to bring different, different apps, too.
Maybe you wouldn't rather come up with your own and solicit it, wouldn't you?
Maybe after I retire. And I'm sitting going, what's nothing to do after I retire? Yeah, that's probably where I'll be, designing apps, but yeah, not, not at this point. Just don't have the resources, I wouldn't even know where to start, truthfully. You know, to write a database for something we do, okay, no, I got a starting point, but current app, I don't know, I don't know where to start with.
For the record, we have not signed the contract.
Sorry, we haven't put pen to paper.
As a general rule, I get a little leery about signing off on stuff that we're not sure about, or signing off on things that they came to us about. I mean, the sentiment seems to be a correct one, is see what happens. Now, $99 a month, then, want to have a little bit better idea where we are next year. Now, my main concern is making sure we didn't have to bid it out. I think Bill clarified that, so... Unless anybody sees another reason to send it back to staff, we probably don't, we don't need to.
Well, we have 11 months to explore.
Yeah, and I, the only other, the only other thing that was, as far as the app vendor using our information, I think the, I think the contract pretty much, I don't have it in front of me, but it pretty much spelled out that, that our information that he drove off of our website is just particularly for the app, they're not going to go off. I don't even know what would be on there, that would be interesting for anybody to...
The information we put on there is proprietary to us, so the way I read the contract was it couldn't be sold to third parties. But the setup of the app is proprietary to them, so how they configure the app and that, we can't use that at our advantage, so to speak, so, quote unquote, we can't steal their technology and create our own app next year, if we learn how to do that. Above my pay grade, I know that, so. And they can't, they can't use our proprietary stuff either. But quite frankly, as Matt said, a lot of the stuff that's on there is already on the website anyways, so, I mean, anybody could take it and use it if they found somebody that was willing to pay him for it. I'm not so sure that there's people out there that want to pay for the names of council members, the names of city attorneys, and, you know, I mean, the stuff on there is public in nature, I don't know how you could profit from it. I'm sure this company is, is going to make something off of it. I mean, they wouldn't be in business if they, they weren't making something off of it, but I would imagine at $99 per month, they're not making a huge amount of profit off of it. Sure they'd make more if they have every municipality in the United States at $99 a month, yeah, they're probably making a lot of money, but I don't know that they're making that much off it.
I just want a quick question from Matt. Is this the gentleman that runs this company is from here but isn't located here now? Did you say that last?
Correct, yeah. He's a native of Alpena, but no longer lives here. The name kind of gives that away.
They're probably all over by now.
Do we need to take action or no action?
Only action would be if you want to do anything different than the action we took a couple of weeks ago, but that was good clarification, I think.
Good information.
Agreed.
Good information.
Thank you, Steve.
I expect to have your app ready next year, Steve.
All right, chief, can come back up for a new business, one-year review and report on traffic control order 212, enforcement of signage on Alpena High School property. Yeah, you're right, that's qualified to go a lot longer than I thought it was supposed to be. All right. We're up to the traffic control order number 212. July 2, 2012, council approved traffic control order number 212, and an order that provided the Alpena Police Department the authority to enforce traffic control signage on the Alpena High School campus. Council's final approval was contingent upon a follow-up report at the conclusion of the school year that would hopefully assist engaging the effectiveness of the order. School ladies and officer Tim Markhor subsequently provided a summary report pertaining to contacts conducted under the traffic order. Officer Markhor advised 15 traffic warnings were issued, 10 for disobeying a stop sign, and five for traveling the runway on Illinois Street. Officer Markhor further reported that although warnings were issued, and a loose citations, violators were acutely aware of the possible consequences. He was confident the traffic order effectively curtailed traffic violations on and most likely off campus because of the law enforcement contact. In the attached, attached letter of support from Alpena High School, Principal Matt Foley here wrote, quote, "Since its inception, we have noticed a significant improvement with students obeying traffic laws and therefore wish to have the order renewed for the safety of our students and visitors," unquote. I actually did these sentiments of Officer Markhor and Principal Foley, and I respectfully request council approve traffic order number 2-12 on a permanent basis. Any questions?
And the new number is 13-1, just so you know.
I think, yes, that would be correct for 2.
Because it's going to be, if you do approve it, it would be a new traffic control, because it'll be permanent.
Okay. I don't have an issue with it, I, yeah, I kind of, I was glad that you had something in there from the school system, just to know that they're, that they're good with it, and to have signs like that, and the worst thing is having drivers of any kind, whether they're students or parents, knowing that if Officer Markhor was standing right there without this ordinance, they could just blow through anything, and he would just be able to wave.
He has the option, that's correct. I also just say, I spoke to the superintendent of Volcom this morning also, and he's also very supportive of the measure, so...
And we approve the traffic control order number 13-1 on a permanent basis.
Second.
I think I said that backwards, it's 113, not 13.
13.
Okay, just checking.
Maybe we won't approve that.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Right.
Thank you, chief.
I'm never adjourned.
Nope.
Nope, we got one more.
Don't anybody second that? We did add a new business, which is the winery, we each had a memo from Leslie Dort. Your Karen, did you want to present that, you had contact with them?
Yeah, this is somewhat of a last minute request, and we always bring new events to the council. So, the Thunder Bay Winery is requesting that we close the alley from two to, I'm sorry, from Second to Third Avenue between River and Chisholm Streets on September 14 for a Crush Festival between 12 and 4 p.m., and the community will have ample space to take part in the festive part of wine making. It will involve many neighboring businesses to the Thunder Bay Winery, and they will not be serving alcohol in this outdoor space. The extent of the space they will use includes the private spaces near the center building and the owl, for which they will contact the property owners. If needed, they will stretch into the Chisholm Pocket Park to extend the festival. They will also alert business owners along the affected alley of the closure upon approval. Sounds fun.
Is this more of a stomping on grapes?
A bit of a stinging of the wine and such.
Yes.
I can see Lucy Ricardo on the stool.
Yeah.
Can I dip check?
Absolutely not. This is what I...
Joel, yeah, volunteered to be permanent, so...
I did?
No, the department has had no problem with it, safety wise, or we'll get them some barricades if they need them. That's okay with council.
I'm, we approve.
Second. Do you have a one or a second?
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Right?
Eiler?
Yes.
I'm done. I'm never adjourned.
I second.
You are watching All About Elpena.